All right, welcome to another episode of Real Physician Reacts. I am your truly Dr. Barry Pierre, your favorite board certified internist. Host of Real Physician Reacts. If this is your first time, this is my weekly show where I just take a video that comes across my social media feed. And really just kind of give my really in-depth reaction to it. And unfortunately, there's a lot of misinformation going on, especially with this week's video. I hope you caught last week's video where we featured two anti-vast slash, you know, domestic, early domestic terrorists. In the vaccine police as well as Sean Lynch. So please catch that if you have not had the chance and make sure to subscribe. And follow up here every Thursday evening live with me where I just again kind of give my real raw reaction and I can't wait to see it. So this week I had talking about Dr. Sean Brooks. You've probably seen him across the blogs and the kind of video sphere. This was a PhD doctor who went into another school board meeting. First of all, I'm not sure what's happening now, but like I know the attendance at school board meetings has to be through the roof. Because every time we're seeing a school board meeting happen, we're seeing people who have no problem spreading misinformation. And really disinformation out to the general public and because they don't know anybody, they're seen as the authority. Please check out my episode with Dr. Dan Stock. He, he kind of started our whole Real Physician React series. So I'm going to be then bringing you into Dr. Sean Brooks's world and we're just going to be giving our critiques. And trust me guys, I have a lot of them. This was one that I got like upset watching. Because I know and I'm like, it's one of those things where like, I almost want to take myself to a school board meeting. Just in case if someone around my local area starts saying something crazy like this, we could at least have someone credible to be able to really defunct them in real life. So let's, let's take a look at Dr. Sean Brooks and you know, stick with me. Like I said, it's going to be, it's going to be doozy today. All right. So we're already starting. So for those who may not be familiar, when we, when we talk about kind of premier. Advanced level institutions, Oxford is one of those ones where you're like, oh, you went to Oxford, right? And just like, like if someone says, I went to Yale, went to Harvard, it's like in that ilk. So when you see him mention that, you know, he's Dr. Sean Brooks, PhD and went to Oxford, right? Like that already gives some level of credibility. Until you realize that the Oxford he's referring to is in Ohio, right? And not the prestigious one out the country, right? So again, it's just one of those things where he's already starting off on the wrong foot as far as displaying this level of expertise that he wants us to believe he has. So again, just doing some research on our own on Mr. Dr. Sean Brooks. We see that his PhD is in education. And if you check on Amazon, you'll see some books on written by him or authored by him, but nothing to do with health, nothing to do with medicine. For what we know, he has no noted history in any medical related research. So again, here we have yes, a PhD doctor, but in education, nothing to do with virology, nothing to do with infectious disease, nothing that you would think. Would have to be, you know, at the forefront, especially if you're going to speak on this disease. That's caused this pandemic for the next, this past year and a half. But again, what a common theme that we're seeing at these school board meetings is that they stand with a level of confidence. And because people don't know any better, they just continue to let them ramble on. So let me stop you there guys. So again, if you follow me on TikTok and again, I suggest you follow me on TikTok, Dr. Barry Pierre. This, this was, this was something that one of the commentators also, also mentioned like on one of my posts. When I was talking about the vaccine, well, you know, the, the creator of the mRNA vaccine, Dr. Robert Malone. And again, this is, this is a point that is patently false. Dr. Robert Malone is not the creator of the mRNA vaccines. That title actually belongs to two scientists, Dr. Caitlin Karakow and Dr. Drew Weisman. They both are not only the founders and well-known respected founders of mRNA vaccine. But they also are both recipients of mRNA vaccines as well too. So again, when he starts off saying about Dr. Robert Malone, and this is what I've noticed, especially just kind of again, this is our fourth episode. Yeah. Fourth episode of this real position reacts is that everyone seems to be reading from the same playbook. All the anti-maskers, all the anti-COVID vaccine, they're all reading from the same playbook. And one of the figures that they always tend to mention is Dr. Robert Malone, who has already been disproven to have any. Significant importance, especially in the realm of mRNA vaccines. He's just kind of, he just kind of started calling himself the creator of the mRNA vaccine and didn't think we'd fact check them, but fortunately we did. So again, a funny, first of all, I, I've never heard of the term jabs. Until kind of this COVID related movement, right? This anti-vaccine movement, like people on that other side, I call them pro-COVID 19 or anti-vaccine. They've been referring to this vaccine as the jab. And again, I think it's a way to downplay the significant importance that this vaccine has had across the world. So you're going to, you're going to hear him referred to as the jab a lot. So you don't kind of be, you know, concerned or worried like where's the jab coming from? Another pointy thing, like he mentions Dr. Robert Malone, one being the creator of mRNA vaccine, which is false. We also mentioned that he says that no one should ever take the mRNA vaccine. So guess what do you think I'm about to tell you? That's right. Dr. Robert Malone has taken the mRNA vaccine. He actually took the Moderna vaccine after contracting COVID-19. And unfortunately, he thought that it was going to help improve some of his long haul related symptoms from the COVID-19, which it didn't. In fact, in, in his eyes, he feels that taking a vaccine worsened his long haul usage, in which we know there is no evidence to show of the matter. But again, so again, not only does he quote that Dr. Malone is the creator of mRNA vaccine, which is false. But he also quotes that Dr. Robert Malone says, no one should ever take the mRNA vaccines, which Dr. Robert Malone has already taken the vaccines. Again, didn't create it, also took the vaccine. So such a, such a bold proclamation, right? That those who have taken the vaccine, right? And just, just to give you some quick numbers. As I am recording this, 2.18 billion people across the world are fully vaccinated. 2.18 billion with a B. And Dr. Sean Brook wants us to believe that we are going to die within the next six months, three years, six to three years or three years of. I'm not sure of his timetable, but he just wants us to believe that we're all going to die in this like short timeframe. Again, obviously patently false. Again, this is one of the things, Dr. Dan Stock did the same thing where they mention a falsehood, right? And then they, more importantly, they mentioned a random statistic. He, there is no article, no basis, nothing that where he gets this random 35% from. But he says it so confidently that if, again, if you're sitting in that room, which a lot of people are. You just assume that wow, he must know what he's talking about. So again, no article, no evidence, no research whatsoever. To one note of this decrease in our immunity by quote unquote 35%, I'm not sure how he would even measure that. False. Again, again, just shoots out the number, just shoots out the random number, 50%. Like 15% like this randomly is our, and again, what is he measuring? Like, how is he measuring that immune response is lower like this? Again, just a little bit of craziness when we talk about just blatant lies and disinformation. Again, this is where my level of frustration started to grow watching this. Because not only is he ran off the deep end with the lies. Is that it's a snowball of lies, like at least with Dr. Dan Stock, he would sprinkle some half truths here and there. Wrapped around some lies. So you had to like, okay, yes, that part is true, but the rest of that is false. Like what you've just heard in the past, like 20 seconds has been all lies. There's no truth whatsoever, no percentages whatsoever. Now he feels that people who have gotten boosters, and by the way, as, as I'm recording this, there are already health professionals and people getting ready to get the boosters. I personally cannot wait till my hospital has availability for boosters. So I can get some myself. But he says that we're just going to be dropping dead, which again, is completely false. So now not only is taking the vaccine going to kill us in six months, three years, five years, whatever his timetable is. But now if we happen to get the flu shot, we'll also die, I guess, from getting said quote unquote jab. And CDC already recommends that you can, you can quite readily take both the COVID vaccine as well as a flu vaccine. Most of the physicians I talked to do recommend splitting it out a couple of weeks just to make sure. Not that they feel that there's any cross reactivity, but if you're going to have a reaction, at least they can attribute their reaction to one vaccine versus the other. But again, so now he's, he's told us that now if we take the flu shot, we're going to die, right? So is this all doom and gloom for Dr. Sean Brooks? Unfortunately, I guess for him, because he's not taking the jab, he has nothing to worry about. So this may be a term that sounds familiar, especially if he caught the episode with Dr. Dan Stock, because he kind of mentioned this as well. So I'm in, in short, and he's going to go a little bit explanation of what it is, but in short, does not occur, right? And reason why it does not occur is because we haven't seen any human related evidence of it. When we talk about this antibody mediated response, we've seen it in cells, like we've seen it during our testing. But when it comes to human practice after vaccinations, we have not seen, we have, we're not seeing it in humans. The fact that studies are showing we've seen in some animals, like it's been positive animals, but no humans. So again, he brings this up like again, right from the playbook that they all like tend to be reading from. And again, please check out our episode with Dr. Dan Stock, because again, Dr. Stan thought did the same thing, you know, with, with, with his bowl of lies. So now, not only does he infer that me taking the vaccine is going to kill myself, me taking a booster is going to kill myself. Me taking a flu vaccine will kill myself. Like all of these things are going to end up killing myself as well as decreasing my immunity by this random 15 or 35%. Now he mentions that there's a possibility. That we may be getting some placebo. So he says, if you are lucky enough to get a placebo instead of the actual mRNA or vector vaccines. That are available, at least here in a country, United States, that you're lucky, right? Again, no evidence whatsoever that Pfizer, Moderna, Johnson and Johnson, or any other vaccines out here are actually giving a false placebo. Of their medication. Again, it doesn't make any sense whatsoever, but when, when you're, when you're rolling with the lies, you just kind of continue. And they just kind of like roll off your tongue, unfortunately. Yes, we would know that because when it comes to. Quality control, especially with the vaccine, especially with these vaccines here. You better believe that the checks and balances that occur to make sure that every single type of vaccine you receive is the same as the one before, is the same as the one after. It's so highly scrutinized, like this would never occur. Mind you, remember here in the United States, we paused the Johnson and Johnson Vaccine Administration. After six cases of blood clotting and low platelet related disorder, six. So if he thinks that we would somehow allow an episode where you can have some placebos rolling around again. But again, when you're lying, right? Everything sounds amazing. It can cause organ failure, but you know what can also cause organ failure? COVID, right? And again, this is one of those things where when I, when I talk about the anti-vax movement. I really feel and, and I hate, I hate calling them anti-vax because a lot of them have such pro-COVID 19 tendencies. Like I think they're perfectly okay with having COVID-19, like they would rather have COVID-19 than deal with a possible effect from. The vaccine, right? Like in the, and that's really the scary thing. But again, this, this dependent antibody dependent mediated enhancement, again, does not occur in humans, isn't that we are not seeing it in humans. There's definitely no evidence of it in our COVID vaccines. Okay. All right. So again, we, we kind of mentioned earlier about the vector vaccines is the Johnson and Johnson here in the United States. There has been no evidence to show that the mRNA vaccines, the Moderna or Pfizer has had any episodes of blood clotting related disorders. And the ones for the Johnson and Johnson are vector vaccine. We've seen in the relation of young women at age 50 with a possible history of clotting disorder. Though, though, and with that, with caution, not even say totally exclusionary, just with caution. But again, now Dr. Sean Brooks wants us to believe that we're all now walking around with blood clots, just because we got the vaccine. Again, one of those things where again, if you're sitting, again, I, I, I just, I look in, I look at the room and I look at the people behind them. I look at this guy, just kind of looking at him intently with a mask on and they're, they're eating this all up. They're like, oh my God, I can't believe, like they're in starstruck of this, this man, this Dr. Brooks. Who comes in and just tells a whole plethora of lies. And again, and they're just unfortunately having to eat it all up. And that's, that's really the scary thing. So again, the D timer test is probably one of the more common tests and we obviously we've been doing this way before. Dealing with COVID, but the D timer test is a very interesting test. One, it's, it spells that it talks about the, especially when we think about statistics, the difference between sensitivity and specificity. The D timer is significantly sensitive in our body, right? And there are a few things that cause elevation in D timer, infection, fever, blood clots, chronic kidney disease, cancer. So there's, there's a few different instances that cause an elevated D timer. What the D timer is important for, especially in clinical practice in a hospital, is that if I'm taking care of a patient who I am concerned has a blood clot in their lungs. I'm concerned that they have a blood clot in their lung, blood clot in their legs. And they don't have any of those other things, any fever, any infection, any recent trauma, anything that may also cause the D timer to be elevated. If I get a D timer and it's negative, then I have what we consider a high negative predictive value, which means that the likelihood that you have a clot. After having a negative D timer is so low that we can pretty much say you likely don't have a clot. Like that's where the D timer comes in. It is not a test we order all willy-nilly. It is not a test we order on the routine for every single patient, because it wouldn't make no sense to, especially when I mentioned, again, you can, again, you can fall. And trip and fall and then go to the ER. If they do a D timer, your D timer can be elevated, right? If you have kidney disease, because the D timer is typically eliminated through the kidneys, guess what? If your kidneys don't work as well, guess what? They can't eliminate the D timer concentration in your system. So again, that falsely elevated as well too. If you're having a fever, if you're ill, you have pneumonia, you have an infection. All of these things can cause a rise in the D timer, which again, makes the test eh, like whatever in that regard. But again, you're going to hear him just kind of talk about it like it's the holy grail when thinking about blood clots, when it's not. So again, we have, yeah, again, I feel, I feel like every week I do this, but like I'm, I'm, I get so exacerbated by just the amount of lies that are there. So CDC keeps track of deaths related around the timeframe of you getting the vaccine, usually within two to three weeks. And at this time, right, we have just a quick, we need to do a quick glance. At this time, we have 369 million doses of the COVID vaccine given out here in this country. We have 7,200 deaths, which gives us a percentage of 0.002%. So when you hear millions of people have died, trust me, if millions of people would have died from this COVID vaccine. COVID vaccine would not be getting FDA approved, right? We would, we would have stopped again, like I kind of mentioned earlier with Johnson and Johnson, we stopped it after only six cases. And that's when, when almost seven million people had received the Johnson and Johnson vaccine. So if you think millions of people could be dying at our footsteps, right? In our hospitals, home, wherever, where we, Dr. Sharp believes they're dying and you wouldn't hear about it on the news. Yeah, I have a bridge in Brooklyn to sell you. So again, and this, this is when it starts really getting disheartening with the lies is that now imagine being a parent sitting in that room. Wanting to protect your child and you hear this crazy man who just, who's been lying down for about two minutes. Which probably seems like forever. You hear this crazy man say, if you vaccinate your child, you will sterilize them. One, no evidence of infertility associated with the COVID-19 vaccines whatsoever. The, the mechanism of action to cause infertility, right? Like is that the mechanism of action of this vaccine? So like, it just, it just isn't, right? And you, you have, you have this, 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 this guy who's just lying, right? And now he's scaring the children and now he's scaring the parents, which I know has to be nerve wracking because you're, you're hearing all of these. Like, you know, recommendations here, recommendations there, and you just want to protect your child. And here comes this liar on here at another school board meeting saying, don't do it or you're going to sterilize them. False again. Again, just random 80%, 35%, 15%. Again, just these random numbers. Never can provide any sources for any, they never can, right? I always ask, they never can provide any sources from where they pull these numbers up. And if they are able to provide sources, the second we go and like actually evaluate those papers, we rip them to shreds, right? But again, he's, this is his playground. He's a PhD in education. And he is speaking with such a level of authority that like you, you would, you would have to be shook if you're in that room right now and you didn't know any better. Yeah. So imagine, imagine being a pregnant woman. Right? Imagine breastfeeding, imagine wanting to get pregnant. And then you walk into the room and Dr. Sean Brooks with a PhD in like education, no noted. Correlation with virology, pathophysiology, health and medicine, nothing whatsoever. Is now saying that all of these still births and all of these miscarriages are happening. First of all, COVID vaccine has shown no increased risk in miscarriage, still birth, preterm birth, congenital abnormalities. 000 like this, it's, it's frightening. It's frightening the, the, the level of disinformation that this agent of terror, right? Has come to leash on the school board meeting, but unfortunately, fortunately, there is no one there to stop them in real life. But you know, thanks to the internet and you know, thanks to people doing their research. You know, you could come across a video like this and you can see someone like me rip this guy to shreds.
You can't have kids.
False again. Society of maternal fetal medicine again continues to recommend the COVID vaccine. When you're trying to get pregnant, while you're pregnant, while you're breastfeeding, like just no. Wow. Right. Like. Wow. Yeah, I don't, I don't know where, I don't know what else to say there. When, when you, when you think about fear mongering, this is Dr. Sean Brooks, right? I'm, I'm not even going to call him Doc anymore. Sean Brooks is the perfect example, right? When you speak about fear mongering, he is the perfect example. He has went after pregnant women, after children, after the teachers, like he's going after everyone in this room. To try to scare the living crap out of them. And unfortunately, what's going to happen, right? Is that there's people in this room right now who are listening to him like he's gospel, right? And are going to listen and never take the vaccine and someone's going to end up dying because of it. Cause that's what happens with this information. American Red Cross, if you, just a quick Google search, American Red Cross and COVID vaccine. On their homepage, they say, if you have the COVID vaccine, yes, you can still donate blood, plasma, platelets. We want all of it, right? But again, here is again, Mr. Sean Brooks, the pathological liar at this point, just. They will welcome it with open arms. They'll probably give you a movie ticket as well. Um, now he has, again, there's some agenda with California, right? Again, I, I don't understand it maybe because it's a liberal state. And again, so now he has sold some random seed that you may be getting placebo. You, this, if you live in the state of California, you may not follow the exact rules, like crazy. There is no toxicity associated with the COVID vaccine. I've said this before, after about a few weeks, the, the components of the vaccine are completely out of your system, right? You're not having any issues, especially once you're fully vaccinated. But again, when, when, when you're on the roll lying, you just continue to lie. Yes, they do. That is their job. Their job is to help your body recognize when. The spike protein from COVID-19 comes in and knows how to attack it. So the spike proteins and the, the messenger system around the creation of them from the vaccine is not harmful to your body. The spike proteins from COVID-19 definitely can be harmful. Like if you didn't realize that his doctorate was not in medicine, not in microbiology, not in immunology, not in virology. If you realize that he was not an actual medical physician with no health research, the snapping of your RNA in half, as he describes it, should have been the bullseye. We are no longer human again. Mr. Brooks, like it's, I don't know how much they paid you, Mr. Brooks. I hope they paid you. I don't know how much they paid you. I don't know who they is. But I hope it was worth it.
So yeah, 15 seconds.
So again, so now he is beginning to sinuate, right? So again, so now he is beginning to sinuate, right, and, and I'll, I'll let him finish, that those who have gotten the jab COVID vaccine within the school system there will be responsible for the school closing.
Will close because they will fall ill and they will die.
They will fall ill and die. Again, imagine, imagine being one of the school board officials, or principals, or whoever there, and this crazy man, right, is saying that you're going to die soon because you got the COVID vaccine. Yeah, three months, six months, three years, five years, we have no clue. He thinks it's gonna be a lot sooner than we want to expect.
That will happen in all of your buildings. It will have, it's already happening.
Thank you, sir.
I bet it is.
So fortunately, fortunately, they, that his time was up, because it sounded like he could have kept going. And just like Dr. Dan Stock, just like Steve and Lynch in The Vaccine Police, Chris Key, when, when, when your agenda is to sow distrust, to sow doubt, you only need to affect one person. And he's standing in a room where people who already, you know, a few of them, at least in the front, weren't vaccinated. So they're probably kind of mentally thinking that same aspect of, you know, I don't need to be vaccinated. And now here's this savior here that, that lets us know that, you know what? We shouldn't trust the government, we shouldn't trust the CDC, the jab is going to kill us. He is going to be responsible directly for people dying. There's gonna be people in that room, families of people in that room who won't take the vaccine, who will end up getting COVID-19, who, if they haven't already gotten it, and will end up dying. It will be on his hands. So, Mr. Shawn Brooks, I don't know how much they paid you, I don't know what script you're reading from, but just like Dr. Dan Stock, just like Chris Lynch, just like Chris Key, it's wrong and it's incorrect. So I am yours truly, Dr. Barry Pierre. I'm see you guys next week for another episode of Real Physician Reacts.